Can we change it to that?
I can.
Ah, thank you.
Who's that, Tom?
Yes.
Hi, Lee.
How are you?
Good evening.
Well, thanks.
And good evening to our highly respected media.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good. Okay, media bashing in this, in this group.
I take pride in being an enemy of the people.
Josh or Darcy, just a reminder, Fred is on the cell phone with the last four numbers of three, five, nine, six. So he should kind of remain open because we won't know if he wants to speak because we can't see him.
Okay.
Hi, John. I never got a chance to say welcome to the district.
Well, thank you very much. Good to be here.
Glad to have you.
Lee, can I ask, how's your wife doing?
That big event is tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
We're down here early, though. Had it, there was a, they probably might have seen it on the news, but there was a really bad crash on Route Two by Littleton. So we got delayed 45 minutes, but we're here. We'll get her over there tomorrow to take care of that issue.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi, Ken. I miss you, Ken. I miss you.
I miss sitting next to you. We're not even in the
I was gonna listen to it out here with Jim and I didn't realize you were out here. Well, I'll listen to it in here.
What did you say, Ken?
We're not even next to each other here on the gallery.
Oh, see on my screen, we're side by side.
Really?
Yes.
I'll take the noise down here.
Just so you know, I just let Carla in. The only person I don't see is Mr. Baptista.
I'm not leaving. I'm getting a pen.
Chuck, you look nice and comfortable.
I guess.
Chuck's in his usual spot.
Yeah, play golf and tennis and just mellowing up.
You're muted, Deb.
Okay. By my clock on the computer down here, it's 6:30. So I'd like to call the July 15th meeting to order. And also, just so you know, you are being streamed as of right now on the district's Facebook page as well as a YouTube channel for the district. This will also be played back for AOTV. The, if one thing that's easier on us from the committee admin side here, if you are not directly involved with, on the committee or a member of the admin team, it would be good if you could keep your video off for now and mute yourself. And then, once we have, we do have a moderator, host, plus Darcy is also a host. If they see you pop on, then they can let me know that there's somebody present. But the easiest way is actually use the chat feature and write your comments so that it can be seen. We do record that in case we have to get back to you. Okay, Mitch? You're muted.
There we go. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Very, first thing on the agenda is the June 17th approval of minutes.
Move to accept.
I'll second.
And second by Deb. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
And then the July 1st, instead of minutes, is their emotion.
Also to accept.
I think that was Ken and then Mitch. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Public input. I know we don't have the sheet, so it's a little difficult, but I haven't seen any commenting on the chat either. So again, if you have a question during the segments that we do, just write it in chat. And if we don't get back to you, we do record those and then somebody can get back to you at a later time. Recognitions. I'll go down the line as I see it. Ken?
Nothing.
Mitch?
Nothing specific, but again, I'm sure we all recognize the administration, the teachers for the work that they continue to do to prepare for school.
You?
Yeah.
And none.
You? Chuck?
None, thank you.
Tammy?
None, thank you.
Nancy?
None, thank you.
Bill? Nothing, thank you. And Carla? Carla, you're muted. There you go.
Nothing.
Okay, Chuck, did you have your hand up?
No, I'm sorry.
All right. And I don't think I missed anybody. Unfinished business, there is none this evening. New business, fall reopening.
Okay, I'm going to begin with a slide presentation that I will be sharing on. So let me get to that. Everybody will just be patient with me for a minute. Okay, can everybody see that? Can somebody just give me a wave if they can see the PowerPoint? Great.
Yeah.
So tonight, I want to do some
I'm sorry, I'm getting some feedback. Everybody mute themselves, please.
Okay, we're good. Is that better, Mitch? Okay. So I'm going to go through this and at some point, when we get to the options for reopening, I am going to have the principal speak a little bit to it. So tonight, I want to talk just about the health guidelines and options for reopening. First of all, we are looking very deeply into personal protection and making sure that the areas that we need to work with our students and our staff on are clear. One of those things that we'll be promoting when we reopen is frequent hand washing. Helping families to assess if they're sick and how to stay home if you are. When less than six feet apart to make sure they're wearing masks. The school will provide students with three cloth masks and families will need to provide beyond that. But they will begin with three cloth masks and they will be getting information from their schools as to when they can pick them up. Teachers will be giving supply of medical masks and face shield. So they will have enough medical mask for every single day as well as a face shield to wear. And in high-touch areas, teachers who have high-touch students, particularly pre-K through one, will be getting gowns and gloves as well. Students with medical doctors notes will be allowed to wear a face shield instead of a face mask. And we will provide a face shield if they are in that situation. We will be using hand sanitizer that's recommended to be at least 60% alcohol. And they will be available in all classrooms. We will have promotion signs in the building on promoting high, healthy habits such as washing hands, staying six feet apart and such posted throughout the building. For our environment, we plan to clean and disinfect high-touch areas throughout the day. Each individual school, we are planning to have an additional custodian in the building to help with that. We are working right now with the bus company to do disinfecting on the buses. We're currently looking at recommended products to use on the buses for disinfecting. We are not planning to have students share objects. So parents will get a list of things they should be purchasing and putting in one of those small plastic pencil boxes to have, package of crayons, some pencils, pens and such to bring to school for students who are, families who are unable to provide it for their children. We'll do our best to provide it, but we want to try to get as many students bringing it to school as possible. We are looking right now at our ventilation system because this is an issue that has been discussed in many venues as far as the COVID is concerned. And there's been recommendations, if we don't have certain systems, what we can do for that. So we are currently looking at that situation and evaluating it with our facilities manager. And we will get back to people on that. I know we have a really highly effective ventilation system at Aces. Whether that's the same in the other buildings, we're not sure of, but we will meet the CDC guidelines for making sure things are properly ventilated. Water fountains will be used only for filling bottles. Students will not be able to drink directly out of them. Once school reopens, we are, we are doing spacing at three feet minimum. We're trying to go beyond three feet, but right now, we are looking at minimum of three feet. We're looking at putting physical barriers in both the music and band classes. So if you've ever seen those plastic barriers, you might see them at the bank or other places. We're looking to do that to try to help. So if students are, you know, singing or playing a wind instrument, there's an extra layer of protection there. We are still waiting to see what the state says in regards to this. We have not received that feedback yet from the state. Using the cafeteria, gym and playgrounds, we are looking at making sure it's a minimum of six feet distancing and no stress activities in that area, in those areas. But we are currently looking, looking at a way in which to use them that will be appropriate for students. As far as eating is concerned, we're looking at using all disposable food items when eating so that we clearly, when students are using it, it doesn't get reused, it gets thrown away. And then we are looking at breakfast to go at the end of every day so that students can have breakfast in the morning prior to coming to school. So we don't have students eating in the classrooms because with the three feet distancing, we won't be able to feed children within the classroom. The only exception to that would be pre-K to one where we are allowed to have kids with face masks off within three feet. Next, health the operations. We're going to limit exposure of higher staff and students. We are evaluating that now. We have gotten some emails already back from faculty concerned about their health risks. So we're going to be looking at that. And we are currently going to be putting out a survey tomorrow, asking families if they have a high-risk student, who they are, so we can work with that family on protecting them. We will be protecting people's privacy. We do not have a right to let anybody know due to FERPA law, if someone has COVID. So we're going to be very careful to protect people's privacy in that area. We are trying to limit all group sizes to less than 20 with at least three feet apart within the building. We are looking to limit visitors so that, so we don't have people coming in the outside constantly, potentially affecting, infecting the building. So we're going to be very careful about limiting the number of visitors within the school. And even if they're coming in, limiting the spaces in which they go to. Keeping in small cohort groups when possible, particularly at the elementary school, we're looking to have the teachers move rather than the students, so the students stay in the same environment the majority of the day. At the upper grade levels, we're looking to stagger passing to help those students. And at all schools, we're, we're looking at staggering arrival, drop-off and passing. So parents can expect that they will get information from their school with protocols as to where to drop their children off. So buses, it won't be like last year where everybody dropped off the front of the building and went in. There'll be certain doors for certain grade levels or certain homeroom students to go to, to go into the building. And principals will be putting that together and giving that to families. We are waiting for protocols for when someone's sick. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will be providing that for us. My understanding is we will have that by next week. As soon as we do, we will publicize that. Protocol for school closure and movement to remote learning will also be coming directly from the state. And we are waiting to get that. So they will tell us exactly when we are to close based on thresholds. And so we will be getting that information and publicizing it as soon as it's received. And what we are planning right now is for staff training to make sure they understand the protocol so they can explain it to students and also what to do if we're in a situation where someone is absent and making sure we can cover, cover rooms. So we are currently working on that. Next, preparedness. Students and staff need to isolate at home if they're sick. That's our first thing we're looking to do. If you're sick, to stay home. We're going to train teachers, staff and parents in signs of COVID so that they will be able to say, we think you need to see the nurse. And then the nurse will make the final decision to whether to move that student at home. We will have isolate individuals who show signs of COVID. We will have isolation rooms in the buildings. And in order for them to return, they will have to give us medical documentation saying they're cleared. We will clean and disinfect all areas where someone was sick immediately. And so if we find that someone was sick, that, that, that room will be deep cleaned immediately. We will notify the health department of any cases and follow guidelines given by them. I know this has been a question in a lot of parents' minds and we do have a plan to make sure we keep people safe if someone does get sick within our building. Fall reopening, we have a secondary plan and an elementary plan. I'd like to ask the secondary principals, Tom Talecki and Dave King, to come on at this point and talk about your reopening plan for the fall if we go to a full opening.
Or Darcy, would you like me to start?
Yes, you can go ahead, Tom. And if, I don't know if you're doing it alone or you're doing it with Dave.
I'll do it. I'll begin. Dave, you could add if you'd like afterward, anything that I don't cover. I would like to thank you, Darcy, and the entire committee for the investment of human and other resources in arms. I think it's going to be a very safe year, confident that we're going to see impressive gains academically and be a model school in the, in the states. I want to thank all of you. Thanks to our new dean team of Chris and Dan. They've been developing the, sort of the plans for the fall that involve specific entries and exits, plans for passing requirements for mask and PPE use. We have a protocol for visitors who can come in and where and how meetings will be held. There's an isolation room which might be more politely called a health safety room perhaps for those who display symptoms that we can keep safe and keep an eye on. Classes will be certainly spaced out where we've got a plan for that, moving certain classrooms to different places. We have, you know, we've, we've been practicing with seating arrangements to make sure that we're within state guidelines. Every student, every day, all day will be monitored for their safety, their well-being. And I think what really is great about our staff now is that we have both veterans who know every inch of the building. And we have new people who have new perspectives, who can kind of come from different schools and offer a different, maybe a new perspective on how we do things. So I think along with all that, it'll be a really great, safe year.
Okay, Dave King, did you want to add something at this point?
Yeah, I just think for the committee and for any of the public that might be out there, some of the things that might feel a little different for, for those that come into the building. So our schedule is going to be a little bit more rigid. In the past, students have been able to be dropped off earlier in the school day. And that's not going to be able to happen as, as when the students come in, they're going to have to go right into their classrooms, which is, is going to be a different feel. So that's, that is just going to be something that's going to be different in both of our buildings. So at 12, 7:25, when the, when the door is open, that's when our teachers start. The students will go right to their classroom, their first period classroom. And they'll have that time in that classroom to kind of get settled in. All of our classes would start 15 minutes later than that. So that'll kind of be the, the time when the students come into the school and that 15-minute window. The other thing that's a little unique at the high school is we are going to have that one-way foot traffic pattern, that safety pattern. Our hallways are fairly, fairly narrow at the high school. So as much as possible, in just about every hallway, but, but one and a half, it'll be a one-way foot traffic pattern. So an, an extra minute was added to the passing time just to allow that to happen. So students don't feel rushed getting from class to class. So that will be a little different feel, but we feel it's a safe, it's a, based on safety, it's, it's definitely something that's going to be useful getting around. I think, you know, the, the only other area that, you know, Tom touch base and Darcy did as well, is, is those different areas where students come in. So we're, we're really going to try to focus on three separate doors where a third of our population will come in each one of those areas. So in the end, about 115 students will be entering, 120 students will be entering each one of those doorways. So it shouldn't be a situation where it's overcrowded. And we are going to have two staff members on, I believe both buildings will have two staff members at each one of those doors. An administrator and most likely a guidance counselor basically to check in with each student and to make sure that everyone's following the proper safety procedures as they enter the building.
Thank you, Dave and Tom. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to two elementary principals, Shannon and Cindy, when you're ready.
Okay, good evening. I'm going to be doing the recap for both of us for the elementary level. So a lot of the same themes that you've heard in the secondary plan. You know, entrance, entering the building is going to look a little bit different at both schools to try to limit some of that traffic that goes in. If you've ever been up at Aces in particular, arrival or dismissal, you know that there's, you know, 300 kids plus going out one door and 300 going out the other. At both schools, RCS and Aces, we have developed a wider point of entry. So at Aces, there'll be four points of entry and egress and at RCS, there will be three. Little bit changed to our schedule as far as tardy and dismissals, much like Dave referenced that we can't be as flexible as we've been in the past. So if your student is tardy, parent will have to walk them in and sign them in in the vest to be able to come all the way into the office. And for dismissals, something that we are going to be looking to have is that dismissal, student early dismissals have to be completed by 2:45. Because as we're doing that staggered dismissal, if we have parents coming in within that last 15 minutes to pick up their student, it will become more, more cumbersome and, and safety risk for students. We're going to have to limit, Aces has a lot of visitors in particular. We're going to have to limit some of those visits. Changes, I mean, we're very fortunate in both schools that we are able to accommodate the distancing requirements. RCS benefits from the smaller, smaller school and lower enrollment. And Aces has those big, beautiful classrooms. So we're able to make that spacing guidelines, we're able to implement them pretty eas, I wouldn't say easily, but it's doable and it's not particularly cumbersome. A change to our schedule, though, for elementary students will be the lunch and recess. Lunch and recess will still be happening, but because we are trying to utilize the space and we have to limit how many can be in a, in the cafeteria at one time or classroom. Typically, students have lunch and then go right to recess. And that may look a little different in scheduling where they may have lunch, return to class and go to recess, you know, a half hour or an hour later. So the timing of recess is what's changing, but not the amount of recess or that they're going to have it every day. But it might be a little change for students and parents who are really acclimated with the system as we've had it.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Cindy, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, the team from Aces and I worked on this together and we felt that we had a lot of similarities. So we feel like what we put forward is, is, is doable, given the guidelines.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. So I want to make sure parents are clear, the full reopening is one of our options. The other option that the state has asked us to prepare for is a hybrid model. And what I will be doing is on the 21st, which is next Tuesday night at 6 o'clock, I will be introducing people to that, just to give you a couple of highlights on what that looks like, is the potential of only half the school population would be in building at any given day. Each building will put their student population in cohort A and B. And special ed students with intensive support would be in on both days A and B. This is just a quick snapshot of that, but that is another model in which we are looking at for the district. And then the last one is really a full remote learning plan. This would have students working online through Google Classroom and Google Meets. All students would be assigned a Chromebook so that every student in our district has a Chromebook. Families would be assessed for needs and provided support for online learning if they qualify. So if you didn't have internet and that was something you qualified for, we would do our best to offer that in the district. Students would be graded and attendance would be expected following the district attendance policy. Special education students with high needs would have added support when needed. And the written plan of completion for this document will be the first week of August. Now, I know parents out there are wondering, what does this all mean as far as September and when we open? What we are doing is tomorrow, parents should receive in their email a survey to fill out for each one of their children, letting us know, one, if you had the opportunity for a hybrid model, would you choose, I mean, excuse me, for a remote learning model for your student, would you choose it? And the other question is really about transportation and whether you are trying to bring your student to school or take them on the buses. This information will then be used to help guide myself and the school committee on a decision as to what a fall reopening will look like. All three of these models, the state has had us put together. However, to me right now, based on the surveys, we've already gotten back to parents. I think the district is leaning, and I want to use the word leaning because I don't want to say definitively until the school committee has an opportunity to look at it all. But I think we'll be leaning towards an opportunity for people to either come back fully to school or to do a remote learning program. And so that is what we are leaning toward at the moment. But we will, by the 1st of August, have a definitive answer for everyone. But what is extremely, extremely important at this point is that families fill out the surveys that they receive. They will need to fill out one survey for each child in your home. So you won't be able to put on the survey all of your children's names and fill out one. You will have to fill out one for each individual child. The good news is you can do it right online. If you have a cell phone with internet or a computer, you will be able to fill it out and get it in. And we're asking all parents to get that back to us by no later than July 30th. I will have further details on each one of these, these plans at our meeting this, next week for our parent and community meeting. As we move forward, I'm trying my best right now to get out things as they evolve. Please know and understand, we just received from the commissioner, less than a week and a half ago, that he wanted these plans and wanted us to present these to the community. We're moving as quickly as we can to get the information out to everyone. That's what I have on the fall reopening, I guess, at this point, if anybody has questions.
Just before I lose track of it, there is one in the chat. It says, have you considered the use of pods of 12 and 13 students? Some districts are, which means students are with the same classmates all day, thus limiting the number of students who might be exposed to a classmate who is exhibiting symptoms.
Where we are at right now is we will be doing at the elementary level pods for sure, probably right up through eighth grade. The dilemma with the high school situation is kids don't necessarily share the same classes. So even if I have math with you, I may have English with someone else. And because of electives and such, it's more difficult to do at the high school. But I think what people will see is in grades, pre- Uh, pre-K through eight, kids will be set up in a pod model.
Thank you. Uh, committee members, Mitch, I see your hand up. You're muted.
There we go, sorry. I just wanted to clarify, Darcy, uh, mostly for the people at home, that, uh, this, uh, uh, the plan that, um. That we're putting forth for full-time school, uh, for those who, who choose. That is still at this point a draft plan and can't be finalized until the beginning of August. Uh, so there's always a possibility of, of some changes, but this is, um, the plan that, uh, that we have at this point. Is that correct?
That is correct. So I am, as I said, based on parent surveys, what I'm going to probably be recommend- recommending to the school committee. Is an option either for fully in school or an option for remote learning, based on what I'm hearing from parents. Uh, but we want to make sure we have all the information written out. Uh, so parents can really make a decision for themselves, but that most likely will be the recommendation I'll be making to the school committee.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Tammy.
Uh, just a question from a, a student parent perspective, um. What will be the main, what is the idea or the, the possibility of we do a full return of how students communicate and turn in? Will it be, uh, through the Chromebooks that we'll be issuing? I, I guess I'm wondering the passing back and forth of paper and projects, how, what will that look like for our students on a daily basis sitting in a classroom?
Right. Our goal is to get our teachers proficient in the use of Google Classroom. Um, and because of that, then will we go paperless? Um, that's the nice thing about Google Classroom is that you can do the paperwork right online and submit it right there. And so that is our goal. I don't know that we will start the year that way, but our goal is as our teachers become more and more proficient in that area, less and less paper would be used.
There is, uh, another question in the chat area, uh, in regards to cleaning and disinfecting the school, what methods being used?
Yes, there are two methods that we will be using. Um, in the evening only, we'll be using a fogging system. We have posted the product we will be using online. Um, so that if families want to take a look at it and see exactly what the contents are and such, you can do that now. If you go to the district website, it is posted there. Um, and the other would be obviously our regular chemicals we've been using throughout any school year. Uh, to do those high-touch areas on spray bottles and the wiping, uh, using cloth.
Thank you. Any committee, further committee member questions? Okay, I don't see, oh, Carla, go ahead. You are muted.
Um, I'm trying. I have been trying to buy cleaning products, home cleaning products at local, uh, stores of various kinds. They're all out. Uh, disinfecting products particularly. I think this has to do with a lot of businesses. Opening up and being very conscientious about cleaning their premises regularly. Um, my question is, are we certain of being able to get enough cleaning products? To, to do the type of cleaning that we need to do?
Yes, I spoke to our facilities manager, uh, Steve Femenow, and he has assured me that the product will be in before the start of the school year. Uh, we currently have our, plenty of our regular products, um, on site now that we are using. Uh, but in addition, in addition, the fogging system is online to be ready to go with all that we need for, for the opening school.
Amy.
Uh, just a quick, um, note that I wrote down, the ventilation systems at the various schools, I understand Aces is very new. What does that evaluation process look like in terms of timing and what potentials should we look for, um, for going forward? What cost would we be looking at going forward? Um, and if it's cost prohibitive, would we just automatically consider a, um. A hybrid model with less children or fully remote?
Yeah, um, that's a good question. I cannot give you the answer at this time. We reviewed the C D A C guidelines today. They've made some recommendations for some, uh, ventilation systems that you can put through a window. Um, if necessary, that I hear is of low cost, but I have not had a chance to price them yet. And so that is an option in buildings where we, it may not meet the standard. We don't, we're go- just going over what those standards are now, looking at the CDC guidelines, uh, to see if it meets. Um, that circulation process they're looking for. Um, and if not, that's the items that we would be, uh, looking to, uh, purchase or buy for each building. Right now, we have set aside, uh, I believe about, uh, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. For extra supplies for the district, uh, so we do have a little bit in our coffers from our CARES Act money that we received. Uh, for the state, um, in, in these cases. So we do have something in the coffers for that if needed.
Thank you. Um, just going back over to the chat area, because I don't want to miss anybody, but. Uh, what's the maximum class size with the intended three-foot distance?
Right now, we're looking at about twenty students per classroom, uh, with the three-foot distancing. Um, that's about what we can get into rooms. There may be a couple of rooms where we can go one or two students over, depending on the class size. But the majority of the classes are going to be twenty or less.
Okay, and also, um. Is there any information on long-term effects of these multiple cleaning products exposure on children specifically?
Um, and someone had asked me that question earlier today. We will, um, we're looking into that as we speak. Um, they, uh, they do come highly recommended. These are products that were used in schools long before COVID ever came about. Um, and it is recommended by the, um, EPA. Uh, so we feel pretty strongly, it is a good product, but we're going to see what we can find as far as children exposure. But we do know that this product in particular is recommended by the EPA.
And we would most likely have, um. Chemical names and SDS sheets. So I, I mean, somebody to that person that put that in the chat box, i- if you have specific concerns. You can certainly contact the central office and they can assist you further, um, with specific chemical information.
Um, it is posted onlinely at this time, so they can't go to the website and get that information now.
Okay, thank you. And also, um, one other question, I think, can you? Uh, I had some concerns about, um, the D E S C. Uh, as well as this person that typed it in over there in the chat box, um, going to a three-foot, uh, model. Rather than the six-foot model that's in place everywhere else. Can you kind of describe? What would the district look like if you, if we had to do the six-foot distancing?
I want to make sure I'm clear, uh, with you. A lot of, a lot of school systems are looking at the three feet, not the six feet. Um, and, um, if we went to six feet, we are looking at class sizes that would run about ten students. If we did that, the dilemma we have with the number of staffing we have, we could get, we would have to go to almost three cycles. During the week in order to get all the kids in. Um, I think it is something that the district could entertain, um, half. Classes, which would be at those numbers around, uh, twelve to, uh, thirteen or fourteen kids in each room. I think that's something we could entertain in that hybrid model, which means kids would either go to school half a day. Or the other option is they go three days on, three days off, or the option could be one week on, one week off. I know in the survey results from parents, and this is one of the things we need to think about for some parents. They were trepidatious about that because if they had to work. Trying to set up their schedules for work was going to be extremely difficult if their child wasn't in school all day. And so, um, that's why at this point, one of the things I'm saying is maybe looking at the full reentry or the. Or the home might be the better option for our district, because it sounded like for some of our families. If they have to navigate a half a day or every other week in, maybe difficult for their children. I mean, for their family to work.
Sorry, um, just to follow up to that, would the, uh, six-foot distancing and class sizes, et cetera, does that take into consideration? Uh, potentially using larger spaces for classes, you know, um, the libraries, the, you know. Gymnasiums or putting up temporary plexiglass or whatever. Um, would that be a possibility if parents, I, I mean, I've, I've, I've heard a lot of things from parents. Um, versus full reopening versus hybrid, three feet versus six feet. So I mean, would we be able to accommodate more of a full, uh, school-type scenario? Um, if we utilize those other spaces in some form?
Even in using the spaces, the large spaces, every school probably has three large spaces. So even if you were to look at the large spaces, even if you were to cut them in half. Are you looking at about six classrooms, uh, that could use the large spaces? And in each building, with the exception of Royalston. Um, you are looking at a minimum of, uh. Twenty-five, uh, groups of children in each building. And so that is not necessarily a feasible. Option for us for a full day's worth of schooling. No, we have looked deeply at that. Um, when we did the six-foot option and we really put the chairs in the classroom. And there wasn't in any room in the district where we were able to put more than twelve or thirteen, um, desks in a room. And in most of them, we could barely get in ten. Um, so I think an option might be to go a little, little less, but not quite three feet. Um, to get about half the classroom in, um, white might be an option in using the hybrid model. But, uh, if we go to, we want to be at six feet. That means at most grade levels, we're looking at three different cohorts of kids. And, uh, that I think is really going to water down learning for students. That's my worry. Because if they're only able to get in to see their teacher once a week or it tops, um, a, a day and a half a week. I'm concerned, uh, us being a learning institution is going to go out the window because we're not going to be able to properly educate our kids. Um, but I think it is something we could definitely consider the hybrid with. With either half a day in, half a day out, or the other being, you know, so many days in, so many days out. But I do want to note that about fifty percent of our parents stated in their surveys that they want the kids back in school full-time. And, um, because they have to work. And so, um, that's one of the, one of the things that, uh, we have been, um, looking at. I mean, another option is, uh, which we could look at is. Having our secondary students seven through twelve go every other week and have all of our elementary students, uh, go during the day. And what we could do is rather than having those extra supports in place. Uh, we still have special ed in place, but like Title I teachers taking them, making them regular classroom teachers. In which case we could get the numbers down in, 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 in the rooms, uh, to lower numbers. That's another option that we could definitely talk about, which might accommodate both, both sides. Because parents who are working, if their secondary students seven through twelve were home, I think they could trust in that. Um, them being home and being able to do what they need. But the younger ones, I think there's a real concern about them being home and not having a parent available. So that is also something I think we can discuss, um, and talk about. Uh, but at the end of the day, we are going to have to make a decision, I think, by the first of August. In order for our district to be prepared and ready for opening. But I think those are all, I want to make sure parents understand, these are all, um, still on the table. And the other piece is we do have to negotiate this with the, uh, the school unions.
And then, uh, another follow-up, so that we can move on and we can get specific to the chat box answers, uh, offline or whatever. But, um, teachers and staff and et cetera. What is the plan for training for, uh, proper P P E use, et cetera? Is that something that you would do during the, uh, timeframe prior to the opening when the teach, when the staff's in early?
Yes, one of the things we're hearing from the Commissioner of Education at this time. Is being, um, in a situation where he may cut down the number of days we have to be in school with children. So that we can do that training at the start of the year. So he is saying he might cut down to one hundred and seventy-seven or one hundred and seventy-five days. So that will give us that intense time we need with teachers to train them on all of these protocols before students come into the building.
Okay, thanks, Mitch. I think you had your hand up.
Yes, um, thank you. Um, regarding the, uh, last, uh, question. Um, I very much appreciate the, um, the, uh, the work that the team has done and how receptive they are to parents' questions. And to parents' concerns and to parents', um, input. Um, but I noted, if, if I'm correct, that that question was asked, um, not only of the superintendent, but of the school committee. If I'm correctly, in terms of the way it was phrased, how do the members of the school committee feel? I wanted to respond to that, if that's the case.
Which question?
The, the question about, um, about the three-foot distance.
Okay, yeah, no, it says everyone. I mean, if you want to comment, just raise your hand.
Well, I, I, um, since it was asked of the school committee, I, I, um, I, I wanted to, um, to voice the fact that, uh. We, of course, uh, are, uh, concerned, uh, the. Our ultimate concern is the safety of the children as well, uh, with, uh, the, uh, education of those children, uh, falling right behind, uh. That as well. So we have to be concerned about both of those. And, uh, regarding the three-foot distance, uh, which, uh, I think this, the, um. Writer noted was differ, different from, uh, what the CDC, uh, recommended is optimal at six, at six feet. But, um, I, I know that, uh, this disagreement with that is very highest levels. Uh, and I'm reading here, the World Health Organization, uh, recommends just three feet of physical distancing. While some emerging evidence sug- suggested, uh, the coronavirus can spread over much greater, uh, distances. And that their, uh, three-foot guideline follows some of the earliest research into how, um. How disease is spread. Also, um, uh, from another article from the medical press. While most public health officials recommend you put a s- six feet between yourself and others, a new review of a hundred and seventy-two studies, one hundred and seventy-two studies. From sixteen countries concluded that keeping three feet apart might also protect you to some degree. And while face mask and eye protection might add even more layers of protection. These precautions aren't a hundred percent foolproof, the researchers added. Still, the Canadian study found that face mask, eye protection and keeping at least three feet away from people. Gives you the best chance of avoiding infection. So while, as Superintendent said, six feet, um, you know, um, may be, uh, optimal. It's a matter of, um, uh, every, um, every school system and every, uh, uh, every teacher and every, uh. Uh, parent has to decide, uh, for himself or herself how much, um, uh, risk is acceptable. Uh, in order to bring the children back to school in, uh, what we hope will be a, um, a safe situation for the children. But I, I, my point was that there is certainly some, um. Uh, difference, differences of opinion, um, regarding three feet versus six feet. And, uh, as I said at the last meeting, the superintendent, uh, will certainly encourage teachers that whenever possible, we remain at a, a six-foot distance. But where that's not possible, in most classrooms, for example, uh, we'll go with the three-foot distance that was rec- recommended by the, uh, World Health Organization.
Thank you. Uh, Carla.
Um, I'm a little bit nervous about the three-foot distancing myself, because it's not, uh. There's no consensus as to whether that is safe. Um, I was struck by the, the most recent suggestion coming from Darcy. Which seems like a creative solution to the problems that a lot of parents have expressed with the hybrid model. Um, it, it is really a killer for working parents, but if, um. If we look at it in the way that, uh, Darcy suggested, which is. The elementary kids go full-time and the upper grades go one week on and one week off. That actually seems to be to, to answer some of the objections of the parents who were objecting so vehemently. The hybrid model. I, I think it's just worth exploring more for the safety of the kids. Maybe should be asking parents about that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, uh, so if we haven't answered directly to the chat people, certainly we'll have it and, uh, you know, we can get back to you or whatever works best. Uh, moving on, kindergarten registration.
Yes, at this point, I'd like Amy Langdon to come on to speak to you about where we are currently in that process. Amy?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, so right now, um, we have, uh, sixty-five students, uh, kindergarten students that are, uh, currently registered. Um, that's about half of our total, um, typical kindergarten population. We usually have about a hundred and twenty students between Aces and. We usually have about 120 students between Aces and RCS. At this time in the year, we typically have closer to 100 students registered. Usually, you know, August is a pretty big rush. We typically get 20 to 30 kids registered in August, but we're still way below the numbers that we are typically at. And we don't know why. It could be that this is just a naturally a small class, that, that, you know, there weren't a lot of kids born, you know, this time, five years ago. However, we also have concerns that there are a lot of people out there that haven't registered their kids for one reason or another, whether it's because they're waiting to see what, you know, the district is going to decide to do, or if they're nervous about COVID, or a multiple variety of reasons. So I just wanted to put it out there, we've done some outreach. I've reached out to all of the local daycares and preschools that I've had contacted with in the past, letting them know that registration is still going on. I'm letting all of you now know that registration is still going on. The, we've sent out all calls, we've sent out emails, we posted on Facebook. If, I've talked to Shirley Mitchell at the high school to find out. She's reaching out to some of the people she knows. But really, we need to get the word out that kindergarten registration is happening and that we are hoping for as many people to register early as possible so that we can make plans. And it's really hard to make plans with only about half of it. There's a registration packet to fill out. Parents can either get that off of the ARS site, download it, fill it out, and you can take pictures of it. You can use your phone to scan it, you can mail it in, or you can...
I think we may have lost Amy. But I think what she was saying basically is that the packets can, you can get them online. You can go to your school and pick them up. Either way is appropriate, you can even mail them in if necessary. But I think is what is most essential here is that people understand that registration is open. And we're looking to make sure those kids who are ready to go into kindergarten are registering for September. Does anybody have any questions?
Nancy?
I was just wondering, do we know what the numbers are for preschool?
Right now, where we are at is, my understanding is we have us, I believe, and don't quote me on this, I think there are 60 students right now for, for preschool that we're looking at. But Amy could give you that if she gets back on. Unfortunately, we lost her. Amy, they're asking how many?
My internet dropped right in the middle of me speaking, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, so the question is, how many kids do we have currently registered for preschool?
For preschool, right now, we have 45 for our four-year-old groups. Our three-year-old groups are a little bit more difficult to, to name a number because we get them throughout the course of this school year. So the way that pre-K works is as soon as the child turns three, that's when they're eligible for pre-K. And we, we're obligated as a district to provide services for students that require IEP services when they turn three. The problem is, we don't really know if they're going to require IEP services. So we have to sort of make, you know, keep a spot open for them. We're anticipating about 35 students will turn three over the course of the school year that may or may not require services. So right now, we have, I think we have eight in our three-year-old classes. But that, you know, by September 10th, we'll get two more because they'll have turned three by October 15th. I think we've got like 10 more because they'll have turned three. So it continues to grow and it grows quite rapidly. So, you know, right now, and typically, when I say 45 students, we, right now, we have three pre-K teachers. They each can have a morning group of 15 and an afternoon group of 15. So, you know, right now, we have, we're, we're full. We're, we're working on different options. But as of right now, that's what, that's what we have. Just to wrap up what I was saying before, we are asking parents to drop off registration paperwork at Aces because there's no school secretary at our resident or an Apple resident. All paperwork can come to the Aces main office or be mailed, emailed to us, mailed into us, faxed, whatever, we'll take it. And the other big thing that's different this year is that we are not requiring original birth certificates or original copies of, originals of things. We will accept copies of anything, just to make it that much easier for parents who are trying to get us the information. If anybody has any other questions, you can certainly reach me at Aces or email me, alynden@arsd.org.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that? Bill, are you adjusting your phone or do you want to ask a question? And you're muted.
Thanks, I was adjusting my phone.
Okay, thank you. Parents survey.
We've already discussed that, Lee, so I think we can move on to the next agenda item.
Technology update.
I'm excited to let the school committee know that I spoke to Ed Scottnick this morning, and the Chromebooks are now due to arrive prior to the start of school so that we can make sure every student has a one-to-one device going into the beginning of the school year. So I just want to make sure the committee was aware of that.
Thank you. 3D printing machines.
What we are looking for, as I had said earlier, we want to make sure every, every staff member has a face shield. And we want to make sure that every student who needs a face shield gets one, ear mask. And so what we're looking to do is we have a set of teachers who are willing to print them. But it takes about an hour to do each one on our 3D printer. So we're requesting, if it's okay by the school committee, that we move the 3D printer machines to people's homes so that they can work on printing these and they're not running back and forth to the building to do that every hour. So we wanted to see if that was okay by the school committee. If so, we'll be able to begin printing those face shields ASAP for our staff members.
I certainly am not opposed to that. I think it's a good idea that, you know, they're willing to do it. But again, running in and out of the building, et cetera. I, I think if we can avoid that, that's great. I don't know if any other committee member has a difference of opinion that they would like to put forth, or is everybody all right with it? Mitch?
First of all, I want to say I very much appreciate those people who are taking the time to, to do this. I'm wondering just a little bit on the cost factor that's involved in the making of these shields. Because I know that I ordered 10 for myself from Amazon and it was $36, which amounts to $360 a piece. And it doesn't seem like it's, it's a major course, cost to order them in bulk. And I'm wondering if we're actually saving some, some real money doing it on, on these 3D printers? Or if it will be just as easy and savings of time and energy from the staff? And if we just ordered, you know, 100 or 200 or 300 off of Amazon or, or some, some other place?
Where we are at is, we are lucky that, I want to give great credit to Staritz. They have given us all the product. So it's just the time for people to print and so it's a lot more cost-effective for us to do it in-house than for us to order online for our, for our staff members.
Well, that's certainly the perfect answer. Thank you.
I will...
Go ahead, Nancy.
I do agree that I think it is a good thing to let them work out of their house. As Mitch said, they're doing a great job, so whatever makes them comfortable to do it.
Okay, great. So I don't know if we need to do a vote, Lee, or not, or for the committee, otherwise?
I mean, I, I think we got a consensus. So I mean, I, I don't think it requires a formal vote, so that's fine. Student activity audit agreement. Ken, would that be you?
I'm going to turn that over to Lynn.
Okay, I think you've got the Melanson Heath agreement in your packet. Basically, student activity accounts are required by DESE to be audited every three years. We actually have been doing it on an annual basis. We didn't do fiscal 19, but we do want to do fiscal 20. So the agreement here is to do the audit and the cost is $5,000. And I believe that's the same cost that we had last year, so it's in the budget.
Is there a motion? Mitch?
Yeah, so I would make a motion to, to sign this contract at the, the cost indicated, which as you said, I think it's $5,000.
Yes.
There is second.
I'll second.
Okay, I think I saw Deb first. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The vote, ARP project ban.
So also in your, in your packet, you should see the, there should be a two-sided sheet from Hilltop Securities. They did the, they did the bid for the ARP project, meaning this is just a temporary ban until we get the audit finished. And right now, my understanding is MSBA has us on their October committee meeting where they will finish up the audit and tell us what they're going to reimburse us for, for the, for the last piece of it. So this note here just pulls us into October, November until we can permanently bond. So the only one that bid was Oppenheimer and Company for the $1,800,000 and the rate is 1.2893. So we just need you to vote to approve Oppenheimer and Company for the note.
Motion by Ken, is there a second? Bill? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to approve, vote to approve $52,045 for Leslie University.
Okay, again, there's an, there's a services agreement in, in your folder for all the PD dates. It gives you a description, professional development and coaching for mathematics curriculum, full PD dates and full coaching dates. Lot of them there, if you see it right on the first page. We had a similar agreement in fiscal 20 with Leslie and I think it was like $45,000. And you did vote it to go into school choice, but we were able to, at the end of the year, take it out of school choice and put it into our general fund PD because we still, we had the funds there. So same thing here, we would, we've started in school choice funding, if you would vote it that way. And if we do see that the general funds loosen up, we will transfer it over to the general fund.
Is there a motion? Carla moved it. Is there a second? I saw Nancy, Nancy's kind of in a dark ambiance-looking living room or something. I can't really see her, so, but I did see that. Any discussion? That's okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Okay, thank you. Vote to approve the use of school choice funds to hire an additional unified arts teacher at arms.
Okay, um, Darcy might want to jump in on this one. This actually, I believe we brought it up at budget sub last night and it's, it's actually three additional staff, unified arts teacher at arms.
Went well, Josh?
And a social studies teacher at, and a social studies teacher at, at the high school. Is that correct, Darcy?
That is correct. And the reason why we're asking for these positions to get to at least the three-foot distancing, we need these individual, these, these bodies in in order to ensure that. Because right now, what's happening is, in most of the grade levels at the middle school, there are five home rooms, if, and only four unified arts teachers. So if we switch into unified arts, the numbers will blow up. And at the seventh grade level right now, we have approximately 123 kids in seventh grade. And so we need to add an additional teacher to that grade level to get those numbers down. And lastly, at the high school, that is the only department that has three teachers rather than four. So we need to get them to four so that those numbers are appropriate for a minimum of three feet distancing at the high school in the social studies classes. So that's why we're putting forth those recommendations. And just like before, what we are saying is if during the year we find that we can take this money out of the general fund, we will switch it over into the general fund or to one of our, our grants. Right now, we are assessing the funds that the governor said that we were going to get. We may be able to put some in there, but we just want to be able to hire now. And so we're requesting it from school choice with the understanding that if we can find another medium for that, we will move it, move it in there.
I make the motion that we use school choice funds to hire the additional teachers.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Okay, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, to Dupre Law Office's retainer. You were emailed a copy of the retainer. It is the same current level at $4,000 a month, which includes attendance at school committee meetings and unlimited hours worked under the retainer. And there's no additional charges. Is there a motion? Don't move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Mitch?
Just before voting, I want to congratulate Attorney Dupre on the, on the work that he's done for us and look forward to him continuing with us for the foreseeable future.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mitch.
Further discussion, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Communications, there are none. Financial statements and approval of accounts.
Okay, expenditure report. On your expenditure report, I'll just note a couple of things. On, on page two, you see all the office supplies are all gone negative. We asked all the principals and administrative staff to order their fiscal 21 supplies using fiscal 20 funds because we do have the funds available. So that's why you see them go negative. So that, that is an okay thing. I wanted to point that out to you. And also on page five, you see all the library supplies and all the general supplies again. There are a lot of negative, negative line items there, but that is because they are ordering the fiscal 21 supplies and fiscal 20. We still have a very healthy bottom line in the fiscal 20 expenditure budget, so we are still okay. Even in athletics, if you go to page seven, you'll see that athletics ordered a whole bunch under high school athletic expenses and that line item is $54,000. But the whole budget for athletics is still positive at $93. So he stayed within his budget, but he did order some fiscal 21 supplies. We filled the oil tanks this, this, well, in June. So all the oil tanks starting for September are all full, ready to go. So that's a good thing. And then on page 10, this is where I'll be asking for the line item transfer. We do have our new copiers in, five new copiers at Aces Elementary School and one new copier in the special education department. So that line item's gone over by $32,000 and I will request a budget line for that. The bottom line right now, and we, and we are expecting to have two more warrants. Because as you know, we don't get all of our June bills in by June 30th. They're still coming in. I believe Carrie emailed out two warrants tonight to everybody to approve. One is a fiscal 21 warrant and one would be a fiscal 20 warrant. So as, as that fiscal 20 posts here, we'll see some more, more changes for the August expenditure report. But we still are estimated to see, I, I believe we're going to see an E and D about $800,000 for fiscal 20. So that's the expenditure report. Any questions on that?
Carla?
Lynn, for once, I see a question here that you didn't highlight.
Okay.
Is page five, it's the outside professional development providers, where the budget is heavily negative there. I understand why that's necessary, where's the money coming from? I understand why that's necessary. Where's the money coming from?
Yes, actually, that's, I, I just explained that the Leslie PD that we put into school. We actually had the room to put it back into the general fund. And, and the reason why I say that, Carla, is the categories may be negative, but when you look at the bottom line, we're still positive, eight hundred thousand dollars in this budget. So that's why we were able to take Leslie out of our choice and put it over here. So yes, the negative line item there, correct. Good catch.
You, you're usually so good about, you know, highlighting all this stuff.
Missed that one, missed that. Anything else on the expenditure report? Good to go? All right, we'll go on to the revenue report. I penciled in over on the right hand side, this is what I believe we're gonna, we're gonna see as our revenue budget. We're gonna see a, a budget increase of about a hundred and forty-seven thousand. So what happens when your revenue goes over is that actually is added to E and D as well. So not only are your, what you save in your expense budget, but also what you go over in your revenue budget. So that's why I'm saying, when I look at the expenditure report, I see a seven hundred thousand and on my revenue report, I see a hundred and forty-seven. So we're gonna, I think we're gonna certify around eight, eight fifty. But again, we still got a couple warrants to go. So other than that, the revenues are all in and posted. And like I said, I think we're seeing a healthy revenue report with a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars more than what we expected. Any questions on revenue?
Yeah, I have a question. Just the usual question about a big change in school choice. Figures, is that more students choicing in or fewer choicing out?
I'm not understanding your question.
The, the revenue report, you have a figure for what looks to me like six, no, it's, I guess it's.
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand plus, six hundred thousand plus.
Yes, six hundred thousand, Carla, is, is what was voted by the school committee for the budget, to use for the budget. So if we needed to tap into the school choice funds to keep our revenue budget positive, we would do that. We haven't had to do that, so we've been very lucky.
Okay, great.
Okay. All right, anything else on revenue? Okay, so let's go to the budget line transfer. The request is to transfer out of health insurance thirty-two thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars to, to cover those expenses for those copiers. One in the sped office for fifty-six oh one and the five in the Aces building for twenty-seven oh fifty-nine. And I had a dollar negative in one account number that I needed to, to cover. So the total budget line transfer is thirty-two thousand six fifty-one.
Don't move. Ken?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, and the next thing on our list is our grant expenses. We're still closing up grants at this point, but they all look like they're closing up well. We're gonna roll over as much as we can in Title One, Title Two A and Title, na, Title Four. We're not quite sure what we're gonna get for fiscal twenty-one yet. I think Darcy just got some figures today on some grants and we're just starting to look at those. So I haven't been able to look at those figures compared to what we have now to see if we're gonna get any cuts or not. Darcy, I don't know if, if anything rang a bell with you when you looked at them today. I know it was quick when it came in.
Yes. At this point, I do not wanna say, because I don't wanna be misquoted.
Okay.
But I hope within the next week, we'll be able to get that information to the school committee for Title One, Title Two A, Title Four, and there was one other title. I can't remember which one it is right now. But yeah, we will, we've got those original figures from the, from the feds. And we'll be able to let you know whether that's within what we expected or less within the next week.
Okay, and I just have one other item under other. We did have, again, a budget sub last night and we went over the high school walkthrough results that Darcy and David and Steve, I guess, went through. And I believe there's a recommendation and jump in Nancy, if you, if you want. I believe there was a recommendation to go ahead and do the cafeteria furniture, painting of the cafeteria and the cafeteria chairs. Because all of that funding is coming from the cafeteria fund, which is very healthy. Last night I reported, I thought it was about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. When I looked at it today, it was a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So because of April, May and June and the additional meals that we were providing and bussing to everybody, that, that fund just exploded. I mean, it's looking really well. I don't think I've ever been in a school district where I've seen that much in food services before. So I think we can afford eighteen thousand dollars to do some cafeteria furniture, some painting in the cafeteria and some cafeteria chairs if you were to go ahead and vote that.
Is there a motion? Nancy?
As Chair of the Budget Committee, the Budget Committee did meet and we do recommend for a vote with both school committee, the recommendations Lynn has just set forth.
I'll think that is a motion. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay, Tammy, I'll, two, four hands went up at the same time, so I'm trying to spread it out a little bit. Any discussion? Ken?
I thought we purchased some cafeteria furniture with some school choice funds recently.
Yes, we did. And essentially, two things happened, Ken. One, the round tables we bought because of six foot distancing, we can't use. So that's one of the issues we're having right now. And the other issue is in the original bid, they forgot to put the chairs that go with the high tops that we were, we were, we, we have the high tops without any chairs. So we need to purchase those to complete, complete the cafeteria. And just so you know, our cafeteria is, it will be much more modernized. There are actually booths for kids now. They can choose a high top like in a cafe or a regular cafeteria chair. So there's multiple ways in which to sit and enjoy your experience in the high school caf now, so it's quite nice.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Any other questions for Lynn?
I have one more, one more thing from last. If that vote, is that vote all set?
No, we haven't voted.
All was in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item was painting nine more classrooms, also including the food pantry and shelving in the food pantry. Estimated at nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars. That would be funded from the extraordinary maintenance budget line, the fifty thousand dollars that we have in our budget. And again, Nancy, I, I believe the budget sub agreed to recommend that, but that's, that's up to you.
Yes, Lynn, so the budget sub committee would like to make a motion to accept painting of the areas.
Second. Bill? Okay, discussion. Ken?
While we're on the subject of the food pantry, I, I believe there was supposed to be a door that was installed to, so that there wouldn't be access into the rest of the building. And also because of the situation we're on with the pandemic, will we be opening the food pantry?
Yes, our plan is to open it for September. The door, we just got the vendor to give us a bid on that, so we didn't have the figures for tonight. But we will have a door that will keep people from accessing the regular building. They'll be able to walk in right into the pantry and out the back door of the building without having access to the school. So we are planning for the opening. We have also been able with the extra funds from the cafeteria to pay for the refrigerator unit that needs to be put in there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mitch, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to make an overall comment. Having worked on a budget for just two schools as a principal, I know full well how much work goes into a budget and how Lynn and the superintendent do this so well, year in and year out, week in and week out, with such dexterity and skill, to me is nothing short of amazing. So if I haven't said thank you to you recently, let me say it now.
Thank you very much, Mitch.
Thank you, Mitch.
Okay, anybody else? Strategic plan.
Do we have to vote?
Do we have to? I'm sorry, I, all right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Thank you. Strategic plan update. There isn't anything for this evening.
Correct, there is nothing.
Report to the committee. The only thing I have this evening is I would like to pass along to the committee some unique interactions with members of the public, parents, and the circulating comment. Whoop, Bill readjusted his phone again. The comments that are unusual is this. People have been asking me if students, staff, et cetera, are expected to go back to school in a live setting, how long will the school committee remain with Zoom meetings? I think that it's a, it's a discussion that we need to have. I, I think for now, we should plan on the August meeting being a Zoom meeting and play it kind of on a month to month scenario because certainly under these current times, I am not, you know, I don't, i- if there's a high risk individual on the committee or people are not comfortable with attending a live meeting, I certainly believe that under the current emergency laws, et cetera, we could have the technology to have those who would rather not be in a live setting on a monitor or something at the meeting so they can still participate. I'm not concerned about that. Members of the committee have the same rights as, as students and staff members, et cetera. If they're not comfortable and they're not gonna come back, then that, that's what we have to accept. I personally have no issue returning, but I don't wanna do it too soon. And I don't wanna do it to jeopardize anybody's health, just like the district is going to make the utmost best decision for reopening in the interest of students' safety and also student education. So we really care about masks and people don't wanna do this, but we need to realize that we are in the education business, so we have to put together the best plan that allows us to do that. So I just wanted to let the committee know as a whole, the public is watching and the public is, is asking that. But again, inputs welcome. Deb, I see your hand.
My thought is that the August meeting, it's in the middle of the month, and by then, we're gonna have a better idea of what our opening is going to look like. And if we're planning to have a full opening with all the students coming back, I think we probably maybe ought to keep it on hold for a minute and maybe consider a live meeting in August. Just so, just kinda give, follow that we have faith in, in being there, that.
Right, and I have no, I have no concern with that. And I agree, but the only situation right now is still the group size. And what happens, I mean, we have fifty people on here this evening. If we were to get, you know, God forbid, a hundred, you know, people coming to hear that meeting, we would still be against the state guidelines because it is kind of still a group of one hundred. So I think we can, we can leave it open. We don't have to decide right now, that's fine. But as we approach it, no, we should, you know, just do what's, what's right. And again, nothing, absolutely nothing held against anybody that doesn't want to attend live. And we'll make amends to, you know, try to work that out. It's just gonna be a matter of spacing and how we do, we've had one meeting back in March. I believe that had the live function with feature where we were all spread out. You know, again, but we have to also realize that some of the public may attend these, so we're gonna have to just come up with a plan. Mitch? You're muted.
My only question would be as to what the purpose of that be. Is it, is it simply a, a public relations kind of thing? Because our, the question is, are we gaining anything or are we losing anything? Are we losing anything by meeting remotely? It's not the same situation at school for children. We all know how much children are losing by only receiving, receiving remote education. We all know the importance of those children coming back to school in a safer way as possible because there are so many things they can do in school that they can't do remotely. Can we say the same about these school committee meetings? Is there so much we can do in person that we can't do remotely? Or are we taking our health into our hands simply to prove the point?
I don't think we're trying to prove any point other than this is what the guidelines have been that we have to operate under because at the first, when, when we first decided to partake in Zoom meetings, don't forget the group size was ten. So just with the committee, just with the committee, Fred and Lynn being present, we were over by two. And then at the administrat-, so I mean, I think we've really only done this to kind of move forward as the state guidelines evolve. Subcommittee certainly, you know, that's a smaller number. The public usually doesn't attend. So, you know, again, I gotta leave it up to you guys. I mean, I'm not gonna say, you know, we have to do live or I'm not gonna say, you know, we don't. I've just been kind of respective of the state guidelines. If you want to schedule a, you know, for example, a policy subcommittee and you wanna do it live, that's entirely up to you. The group of folks involved in that as adults to make that decision. I mean, I've just been watching the guidelines. That's all I've been doing. Bill, then Carla.
I, I agree with what Mitch was saying and I, and I'm concerned about all of that. I don't have any problem having a live meeting for committee members. And, and I'm, I'm talking about, of course, in the next month or two. Hopefully, things clear up, but we'll have to wait and see. But I don't have any problem having a live meeting for committee members and administrators and, and attorney and, and necessary. But I would hold the line, I would draw the line at, at having the public there. I wouldn't be comfortable at all because it could be a very large meeting. So if that was the choice that we were going with, I was, I can tell you right now that I would attend, but I would do it as a Zoom meeting. I would not show up if, if all the public is there.
Fred, did you wanna comment?
Well, I think we need to address this month by month. I see no reason why we would have an in-person meeting in August. And I think that we should do it remotely. However, when we get into September, I think we need to look at the data from the Commonwealth and see what the COVID nineteen numbers look like. But I, I am concerned about large clouds at school committee meetings and potentially someone within that meeting having COVID nineteen because we aren't gonna be testing people as they come into the room. And, you know, we could have fifty, a hundred people come.
And, and in fact, Fred, can you confirm? If we post a public meeting in a public building, we cannot exclude the public, correct?
Yeah, if we're going to be physically there for the meeting, we have to allow the meeting in there as well. I, I haven't seen any guideline to the contrary.
Okay, and again.
The guidelines to the contrary deal with the Zoom meetings that we're doing right now.
Right, and again, I'm not, I, I'm personally not opposed. You know, I've been locked in the house for twelve weeks, basically, working from home. You know, I'm, I'm ready to interact and look at people in real life. But again, I don't wanna be that guy that says, let's do it. And then something happens. So again, we have time to roll towards the August nineteenth meeting, whether it's live or not. I mean, we don't have to decide that tonight. We have a couple, few weeks to be able to do that. So if it makes sense to try a live meeting, we can do it. But we, again, I'll leave that up to you. If you as adult members of the committee will. But we, um, again, I'll leave that up to you, if you as adult members of the committee will want to decide if you can't. Um, by all means, I, I mean, that's a provision that we have to live with, Tammy. Carla, I'm so, wait a minute, let me recognize, I think I said Carla first, but possibly a while ago, I just forgot to look at her, then Tammy.
Okay, uh, just an observation, it has struck me that this format, the Zoom format, actually allows for somewhat more public participation than our regular in-person school committee meeting. You say there are fifty people um, signed in here, I thought I heard that. Um, a whole bunch of them have asked questions and had their questions answered, they are, they have the opportunity to follow the discussion. Um, we can't possibly have a school committee meeting with fifty members of the public in there anytime in the next few months of a live school committee meeting. This seems to honor public participation more than the live meeting.
Right, and you know, we can also do things, you know, if, if there's enough, i- if there are groups of, if, if there's groups of parents that need further information, or, I mean, certainly the superintendent and myself um, can, you know, sit in a room with people, we would be well-distanced, uh, you know, in the room, um, there are things we can do, but again, I, I'm a little skittish about um, having the live meetings too soon, uh, I haven't seen, you know.
This is Fred again, I, I think that we're going to need to uh, circle back and see what uh, the Commonwealth is saying, because these Zoom meetings are permitted through um, a special uh, legislate, well, executive order to permit these uh, Zoom meetings. At some point in time, I suspect they'll say you can't do that anymore, because this is an exception to ordinarily what would be required under the open meeting law.
Right, and I just don't know how long, you know, what's the new normal going to be consisting of with Zoom, i- i- is Zoom meeting, you know, the select board uh, isn't poised to um, move towards live meeting yet, and there's five members. Um, so, you know, I, I think we need, just need to watch it, and we need to kind of glide towards August meeting and see what happens.
Right, uh, one last point, if I could.
Yep.
I didn't mean to interrupt, the last point is, I can also let you know what school systems and school committees are doing, to my knowledge, right now, none have uh, begun live meetings.
Okay, um, Tammy.
Um, so I would agree that we should tentatively plan August to definitely be Zoom, the schools and the children aren't expected to be there, I don't see why we would be in the building at that time. But if we're going to send six hundred kids back into a building for a full reopening in September, I would say that the option to do uh, at least the minimum of the committee with the attorney and the and the general people who need to be there, administrators in a, either an auditorium or a gymnasium, if we're going to expect our students to be there and our teachers and faculty and staff to be there, we should really think long and hard with what we're going to do for September when we get more guidance in a couple of weeks, I, I feel as though if I'm going to send my students, my, my three kids back, um, we should something in September if we are gonna um, put our kids in, in teachers who are just as susceptible to anything that they, we could catch. We should, we should be in that setting with them, um, I, I would, as a parent, I would, I'm, I question why we couldn't meet in person if you're sending six hundred kids into a building with fifty administrators, it just.
So I assume the school committee, this is Fred again, I assume the school committee could put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
And I, I think that would be fair to re-assess in August when we do make a final decision for what we're going to do with our students. Um, and again, everyone has to be the advocate for their own child and their own health. And if you feel you can't be in person, there's no reason why we can't do a partial in-person, um, and then for those who do have those concerns, we could still do a live Zoom and have a moderator look at the chat, um, and still be in a partial in-person if need be, but if we're sending six hundred kids into a building, we should be able to fit fifty. And that's my only comment, but I would say August, definitely, we should continue with Zoom and put it on the schedule after we figure out what we're doing with our students and staff.
Right, and again, thank, you know, I, I wanted to bring it to the committee's attention, uh, it's nothing that we have to decide tonight. Um, but that, those comments are out there, um, but I just think we need to, you know, and I, and it, things go through my head like three-foot distances for kids, the school committee's on Zoom, uh, y- you know, so, and I mean, this is stuff that we're hearing in the, in the community. So um, just be aware that it's out there and we need to address it, but certainly, um, we can adjust our school committee meetings to uh, for example, Apple High School Auditorium, where we're up on the stage, uh, distance, uh, and, and you know, the socially-distanced responsible seating of adults down in the, in the um, in the galley there in the auditorium, I mean, that's extremely possible and it probably uh, is a lot better and meets the need rather than being crammed into the arms library, you know, where everybody is directly, so. Again, let's uh, let's move forward and um, you know, I think uh, we really need to plan on August being a Zoom meeting for now, and if that changes, um, certainly, you know, I can get back to you and send an email or whatever, but um, that's just where we're at, and I just wanted to make sure that. All right, um, budget and finance subcommittee.
Um, between Lynn and Darcy, I believe our entire budget meeting was discussed, so I have nothing further to add to that.
Okay, thank you, uh, facilities, man.
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay, negotiations, Nancy?
Nothing to report.
Academic excellence.
Uh, we have not met, I have nothing to report.
Thank you, uh, public relations.
Yes, we, unlike the other committees, we have been meeting very regularly, we've been, um, we're trying to meet weekly to talk about, um, to refine our communications with the public about the school reopening. And um, that has been at the request of the superintendent, and we met uh, yesterday, actually, to, to look over some of the reopening plans. Um, Darcy shared a lot of information, there is a possibility, should we be educating students remotely, there's a possibility of a statewide platform that could be used by kids who are doing remote learning. Um, we have seen the plans developed by the principals for reopening, um, developed by the principals and staff for each school. Um, one of the issues is they will probably, in order to maintain safe spacing on buses, there will probably be double runs of buses. Um, which it, it will be slower getting the kids to the school. Um, and Darcy is, has set up Zoom meetings with parents for next week, um, with herself and the principals at, at uh, each school's individual principal, so she has a set of Zoom meetings scheduled, so there is, it's very um, there's a very, very deliberate and careful communication strategy for the parents in the district, which we have been able to help with.
Thank you, Mitch? You're muted.
Sorry, sorry, uh, just tag teaming on that excellent report by Carla. Um, I would like to encourage as many parents as possible to attend those Zoom meetings with the superintendent next week, and I'm wondering, uh, Darcy, could you uh, once again, announce the, the date, and I know if you have the times of those meetings as well, but they're going to be very helpful to parents.
Yes, uh, the first one is scheduled and it will be on um, Tuesday evening. Um, and it will, I believe, starts at six o'clock, they can go, it is currently posted on the website. So if they go there, the links or the dial-in by phone on information is located right on our district website.
Thank you. Uh, policy, good.
Um, we did not meet this month, I guess we're on our summer hiatus, but anyway, we do have two um, policies, one is an amendment for J F B B. And um, a motion to accept the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Carla, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, thank you.
And the second policy is for second reading of J F, school missions.
Is there a second?
Second, second, yeah.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi, and that's it.
Pitch, uh, committee member referrals, uh, again, I'll kind of, I'll go backwards, oh, Darcy, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to make a recommendation that if it's amendable to the committee, we meet on August fourth, so that we can make a decision, um, because waiting until our next August school committee meeting may be too late. Uh, so I was wondering if it was possible to see if the school committee was willing to meet on the fourth of August, um, so that we can um, vote on a final plan and for the district.
This would be, just to clarify, this would be to meet uh, regarding the op-, whatever opening is decided upon, that would be discussed um, as well as other, uh, okay.
Yeah.
Tammy?
I just wanted to say August fourth is the rain date for the step-up ceremony for the middle school, um, so as long as it doesn't rain, I know that we won't have an issue with either myself attending or any school administration attending.
Any other comments about the um, about the, moving the date to August fourth? Bill?
Is, is this a replacement for the August nineteenth, or are we going to have both meetings?
I would suggest we keep both on the agenda, only because things are moving pretty rapidly, and I think it's important to keep the public and the school committee informed. Um, on the fourth, the agenda item, the only agenda item would be a vote on the reopening plan. Um, and hopefully, all the school committee members would have my recommendation prior to that meeting, so I see it going very, very quickly. But I, I, I don't want to wait until um, the middle of the month, because my worry is we won't be prepared for whatever we decide at, i- if we wait that late in the month.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Okay, um, I do also want to uh, remind this committee that there was a uh, vote at the previous meeting um, to hold an executive session, so I, we need to schedule that, um, I need to know, what do you want to do, do you want to do it on the fourth? Um, because it is a one-agenda-item meeting, I, I mean, I, that makes sense to me, um, or do you want to hold it on the nineteenth? If we don't, if we don't have a need to meet on the nineteenth, I, I mean, that would be okay, but if we're going to schedule a regular meeting on the nineteenth and have August fourth, I just need to know um, what date works better for everybody. Is there a preference? Carla?
I'd go with the fourth, um, just because if the nineteenth is a regular school committee meeting, it's gonna take all night, and I'd rather have it as an addition to a one-item meeting.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, um, so we'll uh, move forward and take care of that business, um, as we need to. Uh, committee member referrals, Carla.
I'd just like to note that there are two people who have had their questions answered in the chat box. Protocols for therapists coming in, and Greg wants to know, how do you get a group of three or four-year-olds to abide by social distancing rules?
Yes.
You might take us to that?
Sure, I'm happy to uh, respond, I, I think what I would say to Greg is that we can't, and that's why the extra P P E for those teachers, um, ultimately, kids at that young age, I call them hands-on students. And uh, it really is, is expected that they are going to want to touch and, and, and feel their environment, and so ultimately, getting extra P P E to those teachers is going to be critical uh, to protect, so that is our goal, is to put, put in place extra P P E. Um, and also to, um, at this point, particularly with preschool, look at our numbers and see if we can keep those classes at ten or less, uh, because those kids are so hands-on, so that's uh, what we're looking at. Um, as far as the other question the parent asked, uh, and I think Tammy did a good job answering it, is essentially uh, parents hopefully will have a couple of options as to whether have their child in school or at home, um, as the last final document comes into play. Uh, but I would suggest that parent come to next week's meeting, parent meeting, express their concerns at the time, and hear a little bit more detail about the plan.
Thank you, Carla, was there another one?
Uh, yeah, further up on the list, um, Dana Lynn Stockwood, um, what is the protocol for therapists coming into the schools?
Yes, um, the, uh, I, John, I believe, is working on that, John, do you want to take this one?
Sure, there's probably several things that we can address with therapists coming into the district. Uh, relevant to providing services, and we need to, you know, look at what the protocols will be for, at least having one-to-one services take place in a separate setting, but also the available equipment and the protocols to guide us through how the services will be handled and how in between students, uh, the environment will be clean once the, the services are, are finished up.
I'm in a meeting. Okay. Somebody's whispering and I can hear you. Um, uh, hold on, okay, no, that's still the same thing. So I mean, I think that, uh, you know, we've kind of discussed, um, the feelings about, uh, there's another comment in there about three-foot rooms, school committee meetings, etc., so, uh, again, I think we talked about that and we addressed it as best as we could, but um, we'll, we'll take it up. Uh, again, we'll, let's have that discussion, uh, I think with the reopening, uh, a discussion on the meet, the meeting discussion can be included in that, um, so that we can see where we're at, we'll have August fourth, now because we moved it two weeks back, I mean, two weeks earlier, I would definitely suggest and appreciate a um, a Zoom meeting for that. Um, we'll have to check some technology uh, links with regards to the executive session, but um, we'll get through that as well, and then we'll move to the nineteenth for any other regular business, so, uh, I think we're good. Uh, okay, committee, uh, Carla. Committee member referrals, Carla? Okay, Bill?
Nothing, thank you.
Nancy?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Tammy?
Nothing, thank you.
Fred?
Yeah. I'm still on.
Nothing, thank you.
Yeah.
Nothing, thank you.
Uh, Mitch?
Yeah, just want to again emphasize the importance of uh, going to the Zoom uh, meeting with the superintendent. Uh, want to emphasize that uh, the safety of the kids is our number-one concern, and if you have any further ideas on uh, how we can be um, more safe given this particular structure, other safety measures that we can put into place to protect the students, to protect the teachers and, and staff, the administrators, we would certainly like to hear them, I know the superintendent would like to hear them as well, and we value your input and we value your cooperation as well.
Thank you, um, with no further business to come before the committee this evening, Nancy?
I make a motion to adjourn, please.
Okay, okay, everybody seconded, kind of, so Cheryl pick one, um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
Take care, thank you very much.
Have a good night, folks, stay safe.
Take care, everybody.
Uh, before we, Josh, before you copy that uh, script so that we have it, the chat box, please.
Who's getting that?
Uh, Josh, I want.
Josh, I want to make sure Josh gets a copy of it to the committee.
Josh, you got that?
Chat is saved.
Right, thank you.
Take care, everybody.